Our study session on providing a board and community with an update on our six twelve phase two facilities project. And we have TDA Hammond Construction to provide some more information to the board and also to our community. And we'll hear from them about the recommendations from, um, from the district, from our construction company, also from the treasurer with a financial perspective of what, what our plans are, what can we do or can't do financially as well. Now I'm going to turn it over to TDA for a presentation provided to the board.
Yeah, you got to turn it on up top. Just slide it towards you there. Yep, it's just for the audience.
Okay. Let me just turn it down a little bit that way. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We're really excited to be here. Um, we are going to kind of go back to a presentation that we gave at the end of last year, but we've made some modifications and some a little bit of adjustments to it. But I know tonight is the opportunity for us to talk a little bit more in depth about it, for you to ask questions, um, and maybe, um, you know, go back and forth in conversation about some of what you may feel are unknown. So we hope to be able to answer all your questions here tonight. But just to refresh you on, um, November's presentation and where we're at now, we're going to move forward with our, with our agenda. So briefly talk about challenges, goals and objectives. We'll talk about, um, exploration studies that we've done over the last, oh, what? Nine months, almost a year. Then move into the master plan recommendation and talk a little bit about timeline, next steps, and then Q and A. So, but at any point, of course, feel free to interrupt and ask questions, uh, as tonight is the purpose for us to have this work session. So when we embarked on this project, I would say late spring, early summer last year, you know, the first thing is, you know, we really wanted to identify the challenges here. You can't create a solution without knowing what our challenges are. And, you know, clear, uh, in the forefront of everything was that Langston is a very high priority for a majority of reasons. You know, it's an aging facility, isn't it? What, about a hundred years old? Hundred years old in age. Um, we've had some deterioration which is expected of a building of this era in age. And that becomes, as time goes on, more costly to maintain. We also know that it's not really operating effectively, um, in terms of how much square foot we have compared to the student enrollment. It is oversized for the student body that is there now. So efficiencies are not being accomplished here, uh, in this building. We also looked and identified, you know, that even though you've consolidated your elementary schools, there's still, um, some lack of efficiencies in your staff that go to multiple buildings. So even though elementary schools are unified here into this building, then there are staff that still go to, uh, Langston and then go to the high school and come here. So, um, how do we solve that issue? That was forefront in our mind. Um, again, maintaining three buildings, kind of piggybacks on the previous comments, too many sites, uh, for our enrollment, which is much smaller as it was in, in previous decades. And then at Oberlin High School, it too actually has too much square foot for its student body. And in the past, we also looked at some consolidation of the middle school into the high school in that facility as well. So goals and objectives again, let's see where we can come up with the most, first of all, see what you're able to do in terms of bonding capacity. What are you, what, what are your capabilities in terms of fund? What do you think will be tolerable and acceptable to the voters? But how much can we get done at the biggest bang for your buck? So we started off, okay, can we even, can we solve the whole, whole solution for grades six through twelve? We looked at that. We also said, well, if we can't, let's look at our other options, which are constructing a phased, uh, six through twelve facility, starting with either six eight first or nine twelve first. So we looked at those options. We also, and Jeff was heavily involved in this, um, looked at, okay, well, maybe we can salvage some spaces at Oberlin High School. How much would that cost to renovate? How adequate are those spaces in terms of size? And does that impact the overall cost compared to building all new? So we'll go through those in a little bit. Um, just a gentle reminder, you know, we are in the OFCC, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Expedited Local Partnership Program, ALP, same program that you were in for this school. Everything that you want to do, you have to fund a hundred percent now, and then they return years to come and give you the state share contribution. Uh, there are certain pieces and parts that we'll talk about tonight that are called locally funded initiatives, LFI's, and those are things that OFCC will not give you matching dollars for in the future. Um, and then lastly, we knew it was very important, um, to not displace the students in any plan that we're, we're coming up or recommending to you. It has a cost and it also has a disruption to student learning and teaching. I don't know why my clicker's being finicky. So I want to turn it over to Brad and Rin and Jeff to talk about some of these explorations and studies that we've done.
Thank you.
I know, it's just get the point.
So you, I mean, you're all familiar with the site and where we are, uh, the new elementary school originally we discussed, uh, perhaps adding on to that. The existing high school where that is, the solar array. So we, we looked at, uh, option two and option three. Um, option two is in the sort of southwest corner.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you adjust the mic just so we're making sure folks at home are picking you up?
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, so option two, originally we're looking at the southwest corner, but then it took away valuable recreation space, you know, if you want to do a future stadium later. And also by, by locating it next to the existing high school, it gives us the opportunity to share, for instance, the, the music staff and the art staff and the media staff. So that was why that was done. So this shows, and Rin, are you talking about this one?
Alrighty, so. Oh, no. There we are. So our master plan recommendation is in, to the east of the high school, and it's a phased six through twelve. So the first phase would be the six through eight middle school. And later down the line, once that building is built, you can add on with a nine through twelve, which you see in the green. And we wanted to give an opportunity for you to choose whether the remaining high school is reutilized and/or if you want to completely take it down. We offered a option in the blue and the teal, which is to add an, a secondary gym as well as an auditorium on.
So are you all familiar with where we were just orientated? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, gosh. There we go. Okay.
Next one.
Yeah, can you do that? Thank you. I have to come a little closer. I don't mind blocking my colleague's view, but I can't see this very well. So scoot over here. All right. So we're going to go walk through three different options that we kind of just outlined, um, earlier in the presentation, but they also, each, two of them have a variation. So really, it's kind of like five options. But option one, um, that we studied was to build, um, six through eighth grade first, construct the nine through twelve portion of the building in the future. And that's what Rin just kind of showed you, Catherine did. Um, so you can see here with the cost chart, we're talking about in this, let me go back real quick. Sorry, Robert. Okay. So phase one is that gray, um, and we're talking about building about 54,000 square feet of, of space within that identified as gray space. And then the next phase, again, being the green, which is the nine through twelve. Go to, back to next slide.
I'm sorry. I, I thought it was, yeah, explain that again. Cause I thought the, the white stuff was the existing high school.
No, no. So, um, okay. This is the edge of the existing high school, and I think if we go back another, so you're looking at this corner here, the new building, the white here, the green here, auditorium and gym here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that corner that I just pointed out of the existing Oberlin High School is right There's some additional costs beyond just constructing the six through eight building. Um, there's additional roadway expansion, additional parking, expanding the water retention on the site that has a dollar value. If, if we want a connection between the two buildings, if, if portions of the existing high school stay, um, that may be necessary. One of the things that I mentioned earlier on in the presentation that we tweaked a little bit is the next item, some potential LFI's. Um, we know the importance of, uh, green initiatives here in Oberlin and solar, and we did it at this school. Um, so we just kind of have this pot of money here that could be dedicated to new dashboard at that school, material enhancements such as terrazzo flooring, like this beautiful floor here. Um, not sure, um, if we're going to need an additional access road or not, but really what we did is we worked backwards. Um, we knew we hadn't hit your, your max that you're able to do, and you, Mr. Reinhardt will talk about that more in a little bit. We, we knew this was the, was the cap of, of available funds or with multiple funding options. It was 30 million, and we were a little less from that. We were about two million less. So that's how we came up with 1.9 in LFI's. So nothing is clearly identified yet. It's just an allowance to try and achieve whatever priorities you have that you can get for 1.9 million. All right. So that was option one. Option two is, let's reverse it. Let's build the nine through twelve first. Demolish the entire Oberlin High School. So not save any pieces and parts, and then we'll do the six through eight portion later. So right here, you can see we've increased the square foot. It was 54,000 square foot. Um, if we want to do the new high school first, including a new gym, because we're not, in this plan, not keeping anything in the existing Oberlin High School, we now up to $31 million, which exceeds the available, um, bonding pathways that you have. We still keep, um, the same circumstances, additional parking, expanding water retention, um, roadway expansion. Then we have abatement and demolition of the existing Oberlin High School, because remember in the first plan, high school stays there in place, so we didn't have that in there. Now we have to layer that in if you want to do an auditorium. So you have something comparable to what you have now, 5.4 million. The same LFI's we just talked about, so we could at least compare apples to apples better. Um, and I'm, the site safety allowance is addition, it's, OFCC's co-funding to any roadway improvements. It's never enough, but we put it in there because you get reimbursed for it. And you can see this plan's $42 million. So significantly higher. I also, whoop, okay, we'll go to two A. Thank you. No, that's good. Uh, two A. It's the same thing, except instead of demolishing the existing Oberlin High School, we're going to keep certain pieces and parts. And I think Jeff, you'll have a diagram here in a minute to maybe explain this better. Um, and we did a, a pretty in-depth, would you have like an 80-page report, you overachiever, um, of all this information about, um, what's best to keep and why, and how it could be actually sliced and diced and remain certain portions, uh, online. So again, everything's the same, except our demolition and abatement of Oberlin High School reduces in size because some pieces are staying. Um, and then we also have the same LFI's, and you can see here, we are up to 39.5 million. Uh, that's what I was looking for. I was struggling to find that. And then select renovations to the pieces that would stay, that Jeff's going to talk about right now, that's layered in, and it's about 36,000, 37,000 square feet at 10.5 million. I'm going to turn it over to you.
So this is, uh, the, the floor plan, first floor plan of, of Oberlin High School. And, um, uh, we, we looked at this plan, uh, for, for a couple of, a couple of reasons. And, uh, as, as Cheryl and I were moving through that, um, we wanted to, we didn't want to just do a drive-by. I mean, we wanted to do a comprehensive look on the scope and, and the cost of, of this plan, because we knew that whether this would be, um, uh, an option now, it could also be an option down the road, as, as Brad indicated. So, um, you know, the work that we've done on this, if it were, you know, six, seven, eight years down the road, these pieces of the building can still retain, uh, be retained because as, uh, as Catherine mentioned on that plan, you know, there was LFI money for an auditorium and for a gymnasium. So in this particular plan, we've got the gymnasium, which the, the existing gymnasium is a nice gymnasium. It's, uh, it's very large. Um, it's got a, a very nice, uh, locker room area. This is cast-in-place concrete. This is a bunker, so if there's ever a nuclear blast, this is where you want to be. Seriously, that is, uh, that is some serious stuff right there. The existing board offices and then the, uh, this is the student dining area, the lobby, the lobby we, we were keeping because of the restrooms, uh, the joint restrooms, gang restrooms, and then the, uh, the, the auditorium. So the rest that you see in white here, that was being proposed to be demolished. So, um, the, the budget that we have in there is selective demolition, which is taking all of this down and retaining that. Obviously you have to build back walls and everything, but what you're, what you're getting there is you're keeping your gym, your theater, this multi-use space, the board offices would, would reside over there in, in this particular model. And then you have the lobby with, with the restroom. So that's the $10 million, um, that's, that's associated with, with, with that plan right there. And, and again, um, this could be a reality. So if you build the six eight building today and six, eight years down the road, um, the OFCC has, uh, funding for you, so you'll move into their funded program and you'll build the nine twelve piece of that. The discussions that the Board of Education will have then will be, do we want to build new auditorium and a new gymnasium? Or do we want to relook at this and, and actually do the selective demolition and keep those pieces? This is more square footage than what we, we showed over there. But then again, it's, um, you know, you're dealing with, uh, you know, it's existing square footage. So again, um, what we have, uh, is, is going to be, you know, valuable, I think, down the road to maybe revisit that. Um, and then you'll also always have the option, if you do build a nine twelve building, to just demolish this, all of it.
Thank you. Okay. So moving on to the last option, and there are two variations to this plan as well. This was, um, what I kind of talked about in the very beginning. What can we do the six twelve? How would that look? What, you know, what would it cost? Uh, so this model here, this scenario is building a new six through twelve school. It'd have two gyms, uh, one for the, uh, middle school grade configuration and one for the high school. About 115,000 square feet. You can see the price tag, 53.7 million dollars there. We have the same things layered on as the previous scenarios about roadway expansion, water retention. In this plan, we're dump, um, abating and demolishing the entire Oberlin High School, so not keeping those spaces Jeff just talked about in the previous slide. Um, we've layered on the Board of Education here, almost 3,000 square feet. So I should say central office, I guess is a better word, um, there for their space. And there's the auditorium, the LFI's, the site safety allowance we did talk, we talked about, and significantly, um, more expensive, 65.6 million dollars for this particular plan. Thank you. And then flipping, putting on and layering on that same variation as we did in plan two, well, maybe we don't demolish the entire Oberlin High School. We keep the spaces that Jeff just talked about, the gym. So our new construction only gets one gym for the six twelve here. Square footage goes down. Um, and then we have the select renovations to those spaces again, that you saw in plan two A. Uh, everything else the same, and it comes down to 61.9. Now, in all honesty, if you could do it all now and had the bonding cap, and we were confident that, you know, even if you had the bonding capacity, that we're confident, you know, it would, it would be received well by the community, um, this would be the way to go. But going back to our challenges, and I know Mr. Reinhardt's going to talk about it more, um, it just, there doesn't seem to be any feasible pathway to achieve this plan. But if you could build it all, more of it sooner, obviously that's in your best financial interest, right? I think this is you.
So, um, Mr. Stanley and I met with the bonding council and finance people that we dealt with in the first bond issue and, um, scenarios we came up with. Our bonding capacity currently is 25 million, 900,000 dollars and change. We currently have in debt 11 million, 115,000 as the end of June 30th. Um, so that gives us about 14 million. There is an exception, um, that we would apply for with an OSFC project that would take our bonding capacity from 0.9 to 1.5, which takes it up to over 30 million, about 35 million. So we, with this scenario, what we would look at doing is putting a bond issue on between 21 million and 23 million. Currently, at the end of this year, we'll have 7 million in our funds, knowing that construction won't start until after next year, in the spring of next year. We'll still get that NEXUS money that would give us 8 million dollars on hand, um, with the NEXUS money. So we could look at a 22 mil levy. Um, hopefully by then, NEXUS would be solved and we'd know exactly what we're going to get from NEXUS, so that could even lower it to 21 million. So, um, what we did discuss a lot with the bond council and with the finances, could the board put a ballot language on there that the board could say, we would never charge more than the 4.8 mils that you currently have levied? And what that would do is do creative financing so that the principal is pushed out further. So that we would, even though we would have close to nine mils on voted, voted millage, we would never collect 4.8. Just like with the PI levy now, we have a two mil PI levy, but we only tell the county auditor to collect one mil of it. And in essence, that's what we would tell the auditor, is that you can go up to 4.8 mils, and that's where you stop. And our debt schedules would reflect that, so that he could see that we would have enough financing to pay off our debt. So it'd be a no new millage, but it would cost the taxpayers more money. But they have the 4.8 mils that they're currently paying 4.74 on currently. So depending on where their house evaluation goes, it would just stay at that 4.8 mils, around 4.8 mils. Ken, did you have anything else to add to that?
Well, I just think that, you know, it, it sounds too good to be true, but the, because we're just keeping the millage the same, we're getting more money. But the issue is that our, that, that all, all of our housing, houses are worth significantly more than they were three years ago. That's going to be reflected very soon in our properties axes. Um, don't, don't shoot the messenger. But, uh, and so that, that's not so good news for homeowners, but it's good news for, for the district. And so we, um, would be able to do that. And the other part of this is that when we did this first, um, when we did the bond issue, the, the bonding for the first time around, Bob and I pushed to pay off as much of that as we can early, so that we would make space for this, for this second phase. So, you know, we have, we, we owe 11 million dollars. I forget what we.
Eighteen million.
Our original was 18 million, so we've already paid 7 million of that off, and that was very intentional. Now this time, I favor, and it's up to you guys, but, but, but I favor pushing it back because I see phase three as being largely paid for by the state. So I'm not so concerned about trying to make room for that. That's, that's my thinking. So as last time, I really wanted to push the payments forward. This time, I see value in pushing the payments back. So, I don't know if that makes any sense.
So, well, Ken, so you're saying you see phase three being largely paid by the state because this, is it OFCC? That, that money is going to come in or what, what are you referring to?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's not going to come in anytime soon. It may be 20 years from now. But, uh, but when it comes in, we'll get 21% of the part that the state would support for this building, which I'm sure that number's out there, Rob, Rob may have it, plus 21% of what the state would support for phase two, plus 21% of what the state would support for phase three, and we get all of that at phase three. And I anticipate that being close to, I'm sure it's not all of what we would get, need to, to pay for phase three. Prices will be higher then, but it will be a, a big chunk of what we need for phase three.
Okay. So that leads us to our formal recommendation to the board about which master plan option And that obviously was the six through eight portion. That was pretty obvious, obvious, wasn't it? Which is the most cost effect, not, the, the most, um, least cost impact to the voters right now, uh, for the district. And it's the new six through eight school. All the other items that we outlined in the previous slides, adding up to that, um, 30 million dollars there now. So this segues to what you were, we were talking about here. Right now, this is our anticipated future credit for this portion, and it seems really low. And obviously when you do the math, it's not 21%. It's because all of these are LFI's here, here, here. So you don't get any future credit towards that. The other thing that's going on right now, um, that's still kind of up in the air is the state decided they are going to update your enrollment projections. So that future credit is based on when you enter the main program, class, it's called CFAP, Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, and they'll do a snapshot then at that point in time and see where you are in enrollment projections. And if we've overbuilt, um, they're going to deduct that overbuilt square footage from the credit. If we've underbuilt, they'll offer you more money to, um, add on. So it could go either way. Uh, it could be almost smack right on. It's so far out in the future, we don't know. Um, so this 4.7 that we're showing is a snapshot in today's time. Let's say three weeks from now, it comes back, um, and enrollment projections, you know, show, show a shift, that number will change. Did I explain that very well? Okay.
Hi, can I ask you a question? Can you tell me what those acronyms mean, the LFI and, uh, the ELPP?
Sure. So LFI's is locally funded initiatives, and those are items that the state will not co-fund. They will not give you a state, uh, matching credit. And then ELPP is, did I do that? Hmm. ELPP, that's the program that you're entered in, the Expedited Local Partnership Program. We call it ALP as an acronym. Um, and then the main program is when you get your credit in the future that we just talked about, and that's another acronym, which is CFAP for the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program. We have almost as many acronyms as teachers. It's a second language, so thank you for that question. I don't know where I jumped. I don't think, is this the right slide?
That's the next one.
Is it the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Someone asked, right. This is what we'd be building.
Who's doing the slide? I think it's you, Brad? Unless you want me to?
Well, this is just showing you, uh, recap, what we talked about. The recommendation is to do the gray portion for 30 million dollars, which, uh, the treasurer described as you being able to afford. And then in the future, doing the green, and then depending if you renovate some of the high school, uh, doing the, the teal and, uh, purple or whatever those colors are. And then, do you want to talk about the, this just show you can actually build this?
Yeah, so this, this probably looks familiar. Um, you know, one of, one of our charges too was, you know, we're, we're, we're building on this site while we've got two school buildings. So, so we've got the elementary school down here, and then we've got the high school up here. So the high school students are, are going to be in that building, um, you know, while it's being built. And again, you know, rather than building down here, we're building up here, which has just a tremendous amount of benefits. Number one is, you've got this area down here for a future stadium, should that materialize. Um, and also building up here gives you that option of keeping this. And also, building up here gives you that option of keeping this portion of the building or, or building this new. So, but to do so, we wanted to, you know, take a look at it, do a site, what we call a site utilization plan, and that is, you know, how are we going to access the site? How are we going to, you know, work the site and coexist with, with the students? And, you know, of course, safety and security is absolutely paramount in this effort. So the blue that you see, that is the fence, so there'll be a fence around the entire site. We've got a gate right here. This will be the main gate coming in. We pulled it off of the roadway area there to get trucks off. Oftentimes, you'll get deliveries, they'll come in at, you know, six o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, if we can get them off the road waiting, you know, for somebody to come in. So that's, that's, that's a great opportunity there. This washout area right here, so as vehicles come in and go back out, they'll stop here, they'll wash out, so we're not taking any material out on, onto the street itself. And then these areas here, obviously, this is the, the building, and we're pretty tight to that because we've got a roadway coming around, and so we're pretty tight, but we're going to maintain a distance there, obviously, because in these areas here that you see, those are exit doors. So we'll need to maintain emergency exit. You know, we'll have those doors, you know, identified that, for emergency exit only. I don't know how often they're used now, but they'll just be for emergency exit in the event that they have to exit the building. But, but obviously, we, we need to maintain that, and, you know, the fire marshal and the code officials wouldn't let us do, wouldn't let us do anything less than that. Now, what you see here, we're very familiar with this. It's, it's very, very common to build on an existing site while another school building is onsite, and that's because in most communities, real estate is at a premium, and so you build on what you own, and what you own typically has a school building on it. So this is a, this is not a tough and challenging site. Canfield is, but this one is not. And, and again, the, so this is the roadway that, that comes around, and this is the, this is the final roadway. We would use this as a temporary drive as well. We've got a large laydown area for construction, laydown, contractor parking here. This is where our job trailers will be. You can see this outline right here. This is going to be a parking lot, so eventually, that would be a parking lot. So we would stone all of this area, then we leave. This would be the, one of the last things that we would, that we would do, is, is create that parking lot right there. And then we've also got another gate here, which would just be for emergency vehicles. So we've got two ways in. We wouldn't be using this one, but, you know, this would be available, you know, should, you know, emergency vehicles need to access the site, they have, they have two ways to get in. And then, of course, up here is Cross Creek, that if that were to become, you know, a realization, then, you know, we would fence that area too, and then that would also be another way to, to access the site. We're not showing that now because we don't know if that is, you know, if that is going to happen. But I think from, from a construction purpose standpoint, that would be great. But, you know, right now, we're, you know, we're not showing that. So this is doable, you know, it'll be safe and secure. We can control the dust, we can control the mud. We can't control the noise, though. So, you know, there, there will be, you know, vehicles in there, you'll be getting deliveries and everything, but the good news is, these are high school kids. So, you know, they're, you know, they're, they're, they're mobile kids, and they're, they're older kids and everything, so, you know, if it was an elementary school right up against it, it's probably a little bit more of a concern educationally because of the distraction, but for high school kids, actually, they're going to probably be pretty jazzed to, to be watching it that close. Any questions?
Yeah, you talked about the road that goes off there through, through that industrial, Artino or whatever it is. Last time we did this, you guys talked about the road going straight south from there down to Lorraine.
Right.
Yeah, so just curious. Why was that interesting?
This is, this is a longer road, so, you know, a lot, lot more asphalt. There's some wetland issues down here, we can probably avoid them, but then also, you lose the ability in the future for your field, because that's going to go right through this, this field right here. So, you know, you'd be kind of defeating your purpose of leasing it. Now, you, you could do that, but again, it's, it's a longer travel. That's, that's really, that's really a path through there now. It's not really a roadway, and even if you cleared that out, I think this is, is, is a much better pathway, you know, through the industrial park. You know, I'm not a traffic engineer, so, you know, the, the benefits of both of them, but, you know, even coming out here, you ultimately end up on Lorraine anyhow. This is just a shorter path to Lorraine.
One of the things we do have to, Ken, is a traffic study as well, so we have to analyze, look at both of those things, exit this way, what would it be like, and also down there too, at the same time.
Yep. Hit me. I don't know what's coming up.
Oh, the stadium.
Surprise.
Fields.
This just-
This just goes to show what it would look like if you want to build everything when you win the lottery. I don't know if the districts find lottery tickets or not, but stadium, you have the Pleasant Schools site where you already have room for a soccer field. And then if Langston is, is gone, you have opportunity there unless that's developed for something else. And we talked about potentially locating the bus garage there. If that's, that would come out of Langston, and we'd build a little building for the bus drivers. So not to worry, there's room for more things on the site if you can raise the money for them. This is me.
Okay, so again, just piggybacking the pros of this plan, yes?
Just, just curious, if you go back one, where are the, where are the cars parked?
So we have a lot of new parking. You know, right now, the elementary school and the high school park here, so we're not, the only added parking is really for the middle school. We're adding a lot potentially here, here, we're adding here, and, and here.
And, and one more question. On the previous slide, I think you said that this road up here was a temporary, I see temporary access drive. On the next slide, it looked like a permanent, which is-
It is a vital road. We're, we're using the vital road as a temporary road, so we'll, we'll cut that in and stone it, and then we'll, then it'll become asphalt. Yeah, then we'll be a permanent roadway.
But not until the 912 portion, sorry.
No, that's-
No. No, that's now, right.
Yeah, it's now, yeah.
And that gives you an additional outlet from the property without, without even doing this.
The nice thing about that is, we're, we're cutting the temporary in, and you're not losing anything because it becomes, you know, becomes the permanent roadway. Unlike if we were accessing, you know, down, from, from down below to Lorraine Avenue, and that was temporary, you would stone it, and then you would reseed it and everything. So that's kind of money lost, so there's no, there's no money lost in that, in that road.
And also, right here, the gray, there's a pretty steep gray difference, so the city doesn't really think that this route would work just because of that gray change.
So what I'm looking at now is the overall master plan, is what you said, correct? The blue in turquoise is another gym and a theater, correct?
Correct.
The green is what the high school would be, correct?
Correct.
The white is what would be the middle school.
Correct.
What we doing with the old high school?
So depending on if you decide to do the renovation, these would disappear and you would renovate a portion of that. If you take it down, then it can be a band practice field, it can be green space. If you really decide you need additional parking, it could be additional parking. It's available space for other development.
Okay, because I was just saying, if this was the end plan, why is it still there?
Right, we should, maybe have made that green.
I think when you get to CFAP, you know, as you're approaching the third phase, then you have to read and analyze this all again, look and see how the numbers are falling, and that's at that point in time when you make that decision. But it's not necessarily necessary to implement this second phase for that decision.
Essentially, it could be a land bank for future use.
Am I seeing this correctly? It looks like the, the gym and, and the auditorium are separate from the high school? Is that right?
That's correct. I mean, part of it is just-
And how do they, how do the students get from one place to the other? Do they have to walk outside?
Either walk outside, or we do have, actually, a second floor here, and we do have a, a plan that shows a bridge that could connect them.
Oh, okay.
So just to kind of reiterate what we've talked about, it addresses your most immediate need, which is, you have an old school that's becoming a maintenance problem and, and sucking up a lot of money, which the administration wants to use those dollars elsewhere. The bonding capacity is within your reach because, you know, you're just extending the millage, you're essentially refinancing and making the loan term longer. You only have to move the middle school students once the new school is ready, so there's, you don't have to buy trailers or house them temporarily. So a lot less, you know, stress on the students, and you don't have to reprogram the existing high school because of middle school students moving into that building. So I think this is a lower stress scheme with a lower cost, and that's why we're recommending it.
If we go ahead and green light this, how long would it be until they, they could move into the middles, the new middle school?
So, design takes about a year, and then construction, Jeff?
How many months?
Twenty. Twenty?
Two years.
Well, we pass in November, we should be able to open up in August of '27.
And then, do you want to give an update on, on Eastwood? You want to give it, or you want?
Yeah, I can give it. Eastwood property so far, I want to update the community, also the board on it. Currently, right now, we did have an agreement with the Port Authority, and we have signed on it with the board, and also with Liberty. So our due diligence period has started on March of '26, so that's 180-day period for them to start analyzing the building, look at it, work with the city. They have already reached out to the city and started working with them on some possibilities too as well. So Liberty will start having additional meetings with the community members. We know that we still want, want that property to be for, for housing piece form as well, and Liberty understands our desire for that to happen with the Eastwood property as well. So we have 180-day due diligence period right now, currently under.
Want to talk about what, what the city's going to be doing with the gas line and stuff, just so people know?
So we re, Columbia Gas is doing a, a line project near Eastwood School, so they have asked if they could use a portion of the parking lot for staging area for that to help be in close proximity to where they need to do their work. We reached out to Drew Siley and Liberty just to make sure that they are okay, that if they do stage some pipes or construction materials or trailers, that it's back out of the way so that they have complete access to Eastwood School for whatever they need to do to evaluate, and also that the, of course, we still have the alarm systems, fire alarm, everything, so that we could still make sure the fire department gets in if they need to. So you may see some piping there, some Columbia Gas type of things. It's just that they're using it because it's a, a close space to where they're working on East College.
Yeah.
So Jeff Baumann with the city reached out about that, and so I put him in touch with Drew with Liberty because I didn't want to mess up that deal.
And during that 180-day period, we're still responsible for the area, so just keep that in mind, that we're still cutting grass, doing everything that's real.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so, so when we started this back in June of last year, the, the OFCC had developed a master plan. You know, this was built on the OFCC's program, this building right here, for, for K5. They developed a master plan for a 612. And in the Expedited Local Partnership Program, you can build all or part of that 612. So everything that we've done the last nine-plus months has, has been focused on, you know, what are we building for, for the Phase Two of that? If you had funding for it, you would build the entire 612, but you don't have the funding, you've got limitations, so that's been this whole effort. Back then, we, we talked about, boy, we were way back here, that, you know, in April, we needed to communicate to the OFCC as to, you know, what the discrete portion was going to be. Is it going to be the entire 612? Is it going to be the 912? Is it going to be the 68? Is it going to be the 812? It's, it's whatever we determined it, it would be that the board was comfortable with, but we need to communicate with them now so that they can put together the documents, get it to the, the board in May for them to approve it. Then it goes to the commission and goes on the, the commission's agenda in July, and then you're, you're off and running for one year to secure your funding, in, in, assuming you're going to be on the ballot in November, okay? And then there's also, there's companion pieces to that with respect to setting the millage and everything with the Board of Elections in July and August for, for the November. But the, the, the big suspense date there is, is, is April, and here, here's where we're at. So we're here with the recommendation that, you know, it's going to be the 68 building. We know the square footage based on that, but we need to communicate that to the OFCC. So I believe what we were asking the board is that their next meeting, you know, resolution authorizing the superintendent to contact the OFCC with the, the 68 portion of, of the 612. And then that will be, you know, put you on a glide path for that November ballot. You don't have to be on November, you could be on in, 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 in May for, for, for next year, but it gives you that opportunity to, to be on that November ballot. Did I cover it all?
And you are concerned too with the next year's just cost increases.
Right.
And it goes on, the longer, you know, we know, we saw, what is it, that over the last three years, thirty?
It's, it's, it's been, it's been, yeah, 40% since 2019, you know, when, when COVID and the market just, you know, went crazy. It's starting to calm down a little bit now, but from, from 19 to 23, the OFCC costs have gone up almost 40%. We don't have the 2024 cost set yet, but, you know, it's kind of all over the board. We heard that it's going to be somewhere between 6%, 6.8%. Now we're hearing it may be over 7%. So, yeah, that's, that's one thing that, that we know. Construction costs are going up, they never go down, it's just a matter of how much they go up.
I'm going to push back on that a little bit.
Sure.
I totally agree with the 40%. Supply and demand, supply and demand, economics 100, when demand increases and it doesn't, doesn't, you know, supply is not there to match it, then prices go up. But long-term, what happens is supply increases and prices come back down again. I'm not saying they'll actually come down, but you've already said, we're starting to see that. We're not seeing the dramatic inflation that we've had before. I personally don't anticipate that the construction, because there are folks out there building cement, you know, plants to create cement and all the other things that were, were high-priced. That's just the way it is. Short-term, supply and demand causes prices to increase. Long-term, the supply catches up and prices either stabilize or drop a little bit. So just because it's been really, really going up for the last three years does not mean that same thing is going to continue, and you said the trajectory's already coming over, so that's all.
Yeah, it's, it is, it is calmed down. It's, you know, it's, it's a-
And in my opinion, it will continue.
You know, the prices went up, but they're not coming down, but they're not, they're not escalating that, that they have been over the last couple of years, you know, at, you know, a pace of 17, 18%. If it is 7% this year, then that, that indicates that, you know, that it's a little bit lower. I mean, some of the things that we're experiencing in the market now is, you know, air handling units and your electrical switch gear for, for building this size and, and transformers. Those typically are a four-to-six-month delivery date, so that's from the time that, you know, you submit the shop drawings to the manufacturer, you can expect to get them four to six months. That's never been a problem in construction before. That same gear now is 12 to 20 months, depending on, on the gear. That really, really messes up your, your construction schedule because, you know, a building like this, if it's four or six months, that's great, but imagine a building like this where it's 12 to 15, 16 months out. You're going to have your mechanical room ready for that gear to be sit, set, and it's not here. So you have to make accommodations to leave the roof out, leave walls out, and it, it disrupts the flow of things. So that's just, you know, some of the things that we're seeing that until, until that settles down, and I don't know what's causing that supply chain. I don't know if it's pieces, parts, I don't know if it's labor, I, I have no idea what it is, but- is, but I do know it's a reality. All of our projects, where, you know, if we can get our switch gear and our air handling units in 12 months, that's on the low end. And that's crazy from where it's been.
Derek, it's a really cool chart, and we'd totally love to share with you that the state has compiled going back, I think, to 1999, showing the construction costs for schools in Ohio, from that point in time up until maybe a year or two ago when that chart was made. And every, you can see every year what the increase was over time, and I think, you know, COVID, I'm pretty sure it was only one year since 1999 that the cost went down and it was less than 1%. Went down from the previous year. So, I, there's validity, absolute validity to what George was saying about supply and demand, but historically, you never see, you go back to what it was, like, it just hasn't happened.
I shouldn't say that prices will drop. I do think the rate, the rate of inflation.
Yeah. And we're seeing that.
Individual bubbles and individual challenges.
Yeah. Now, some of the things with the cost too is, there's some significant code, you know, changes and everything, which impact costs as well. So, it's not just, you know, it's not just, you know, nothing changes in the, in code and design and materials and stuff, you know, so those do have impacts too. I think the new code, you know, the new design manual's going to have, you know, 10% of the academic area will now have glazing. The standard of last year and previous, the last 20 years, 23 years, it's been 5%. So, now you're doubling the glazing inside those academic areas. You double the glazing, that's going to impact your HVAC system, your electrical system, it's going to impact the cost of the glass as well. So, those are some of the impacts that are on costs as well. So, it's not, it's not just a static building, but there are also some dynamic changes that are going on too, which, you know, more glass, that's not a bad thing. Yeah. There's a reason why everybody wants a corner office in buildings, you know?
When you say more glazing, you mean more glass?
More glass, more glass, yes.
More sunlight coming into the?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so right now, it's a minimum of five, and so now it's going to be a minimum of 10%. So, you're doubling, you're doubling the glass.
Correct me if I'm wrong, code still says five, but OFCC has held it to 10.
Yeah, yeah, the OFCC.
They're going beyond the actual code.
Yeah. I thought the code went to 10.
It's a little, that's why I was asking.
That's, I thought that they're, I thought they were responding to the code. Art, tell us.
I think code is 8%, now, the new code. There's a new energy code. There's a new ADA code. The turning circle for bathrooms is increased to, from five feet to five foot seven. So, that means you'll now have luxury suites for your bathrooms. And that all increases the square footages of the building. So, good point. These new code changes will benefit the building and the occupants, and they'll reduce the energy consumption, but they'll increase the first cost.
Right. So, I have a question. I guess I'm stuck on, why is it that if we were to build the high school first, we would have to displace the middle school students? I think on the second, on the third phase. I've been trying to figure this out the whole time. So, I've been distracted.
Well, that was really on the direction of the administration, is that Langston is the drain right now on maintenance, and that's the most critical. Getting boilers, we just repiped the one boiler this year, half of it, and that's just going to continue to happen. And like Brad said, when we took the walkthrough, or somebody, when we took the walkthrough of the school, how do we get new boilers even into the basement? If one of those boilers go bad, we have to replace it. How do we get it in there without disrupting that entire back section of the building?
So, yeah, inadvertently, you're saying that you want to shut that building down regardless of what order you go in?
Correct.
That was not clear.
I'm sorry.
In any of this. That's why I asked.
Is there any further questions?
Can we go back to the slide that has the whole master plan?
That one?
Yes, that one, thank you. So, the middle school, if we build a middle school portion, it comes with its own gym and locker rooms. Is that correct?
Correct. It's Jim right here.
Okay. And I guess my concern is, the plan with the fence, we're losing our baseball practice field, our softball practice field, and our football practice field. So, I think this is actually more a question for Dr. Hall, is what is happening to all of those sports while this is happening?
We'd have to have a site plan as well, and I think our baseball field, our baseball will have to practice over at Hamilton Field, and our softball field will have to practice there until we develop more of a permanent plan.
So, the softball field, and can we go back to the slide with the fence? Sorry, Bob.
Yeah.
So, the softball field is inside the fence?
That's here.
That's the baseball field, but the softball field is to the right, it's the right corner of your?
Yes, you're going to lose that.
Yeah.
Go one more. So, no, the other way. And there we go. So, our fence is coming across here. Now, it is, it is into the end zone of this field layout, but we pulled that up specifically on Jim's request, that fence up across here, so this practice field will still be available.
Right, so soccer can practice, but only soccer.
Softball and football will be able to practice there, but the baseball will be impacted. Those are gone. Mm-hmm. So, baseball will have to be transferred over to Hamilton during that time. We just have to figure a way to bus the kids out there and get them out to accessible forums. So, baseball will be transferred over.
Right, and I guess that's my concern, is just transporting the students. Like, today, the baseball team had to figure out how to get from school to Hamilton from their game because at 2:00, someone figured out that there was no bus to take them. You know, tennis has been practicing in Elyria somewhere, and they've been figuring out how to get to practice themselves. So, if we are displacing all of our sports fields, with the exception of soccer, I want to make sure that we've got a plan of what we're doing with all those students, and it doesn't depend on if the city's going to let us use Hamilton today.
Yeah, so far, we would have great collaboration with the city, and they've been helping us out with those facilities there. As far as with tennis and things, I think we're going to run it at regardless, whatever we do, because we're going to have to transport them over. We do have another van coming onboard too as well for transportation issues, but you're right, it'll be a collaboration with the city as well and getting the students out there if they need it. So, it'll be collaboration with them until we build a facility. But we do have some space down in Langston area and also the Pleasant Street field too that we can work with as well. But most likely, we have to transport them over to Hamilton.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, that you do have that, the former Boys and Girls Club, which is shown here, is a soccer field, and then you have the space next to Langston. And I hope we won't give those up, because those, you know, those could be a baseball or softball practice field.
Well, and we can't give a Pleasant Street because it's, it's, that's got some sort of land.
There's a deed restriction or something on it.
Deed restriction, that's the word I'm looking for, yeah.
Great. But those, and there's real value in having those practice fields close to the high school.
Absolutely.
So, so many reasons.
I don't think the deed restriction on Pleasant Street prevents you from doing anything. The deed restriction said it will always be an open space for children's use.
Right, right, so we couldn't do something random with it.
You couldn't build a building there. Also, we looked at putting in a softball field here, and it'll fit. So, you have an option for a softball field here, you can put one there, or you can put one on the Langston site. The baseball, that's a different issue because it's a bigger field, but I thought the intention was to start using Hamilton for the practices and games. You've got a nice site, you've just got too much stuff to put on it. You really need more property to try and do all the things you want to do, and unfortunately, we're kind of landlocked. You have wetlands down here, you can't go, you know, that way. I'm not sure what this is, some of this is wetlands, I know, and you can't go north because there's housing.
So, can somebody talk about, I know Bob already kind of addressed the fact that there's significant cost in maintaining Langston. Can we talk about the comparison of that to maintain in the high school? Because either way, we're going to have some old building that we're going to have to Like, is the high school cost less to maintain, or what's the?
Well, the biggest thing is the heating system. In Langston is in the basement, where the high school is on the same level. And really, we haven't had trouble, knock on wood, with the boilers at the high school. The boilers at the elementary are 80-plus years old. So, that is really the past the life of a boiler. And working around that would cause major, how, do we, do we eliminate that area? I know when Fairview decided to redo their high school, they eliminated the basement and brought the boilers up to ground level. But, again, that takes area. How do you, with that site, that would eliminate the entire playground, and then you'd have to move the playground. So, in all of our discussions, what is the, what is the greatest need, which building is the greatest need that we need to leave? And due to that capacity, plus with this master study, Langston graded out worse than the high school. And it's an older building, and it's three stories instead of one story.
They go to bricks and things too within Langston as well. We've already had some problems and concerns with those as well, with the building. And being 100 years old, that's, I think we're going to run into more issues with it. We have had less maintenance issues with the high school, and it would seem more doable there as well. I know we do have some problems there, but we're currently right now fixing a pair in the roof and some areas at the high school now as well. We would hope to still do some additional work once this plan goes through, until we have the high school online for the high school. So, it will not be a neglected, defer maintenance type area for them, but we hope to do some maintenance in the earlier area over there too as well.
And then the high school is a newer building, relatively speaking to the middle school.
Kind of.
Is it 50 years old compared to the other one?
And then on the, in explaining, I was following as best I could with how much millage we would actually request, but can you talk about what kind of impact will this have on people's property taxes? Like, say we go for the 21, 22 on our bond issue, what is it going to look like to a person when they have to pay their taxes after it's passed?
That, that we don't, what we can assure the residents of Oberlin is that the district will not collect more than what they're currently, millage-wise. What the auditor puts their house value at, we have no control over. But, the 4.8 mils, we will set as a cap, that we will not, the board will not pass any higher than that unless a total catastrophe happened and housing prices plummeted like they did in 2008, where some bond issues had to go over the stated value just because it has to pay off the debt schedule. But with the scenarios we were able to work up with the finance people, is that we could assuredly say, we would, yes, we would have, if we did 22 million, we would have nine mils voted in, but the district will not collect more than 4.8. And it'd be a good-faith agreement with the residents and us, just like with the PI levy, that we will not collect that one mil as long as they're paying on the bond issue, which we would still keep in force. So, not only would they still be saving the one mil, we would guarantee that today's millage wouldn't increase over the 4.8. Because, yes, as many counties have seen, the statewide average is right around in the high 20s to 30% evaluations being brought up to market value. And Wayne County falls in that next year. Or Lorraine County, sorry. Wayne County already did it.
Any other questions?
I guess what we're requesting from the board is on the April 23 meeting for a resolution for, our recommendation would be a 68 facility to start with, and I guess this gives us enough time for the board to speak with the community, to digest some of the information that we had, and to come back with us to help keep us on our timeline if we're on our April 23 board meeting, pass that resolution.
Okay.
And then along with that would be, May, we would do the first bond issue language to have the county auditor certify that millage. And then June's meeting would be the Board of Elections to actually do the wording on the ballot, because that all has to be done by April, or August 7th, and we wouldn't have another board meeting in there to do all that. So, May would be the first issue, June would be the second bond language issue, and then we would start our educating the community for the November election. Yes?
If the millage is not going up?
The effective millage will not go up. The voted millage will go up.
The voted?
Yes.
Can you explain the difference?
All levies put on, like, we'll take the emergency level we have for $950,000. Each year, when it started, it was at 4.2 mils. We are currently collecting 2.7 or 2.8 mils on that. So, as your house raises in value, we decrease the amount that is being charged to come up with the taxes that you pay. So, with, what we are saying is, if, even though your house is going up, you're, you could actually pay more for the bond issue, but the effective millage that you're going to be charged is capped at 4.8. So, your house might go up $50,000, and Joanne's house might go down $50,000. She's going to see a decrease. You're going to see her decrease as your increase, because that's how they do the property and millage. So, currently, the district has right around 40 mils voted in, operating money, but we're only collecting on 20 mils, and we're at the 20-mil floor. So, that sets us, that's as low as we are allowed to go by state statute. Now, they are looking, they do have bills in there trying to lower that amount, but currently, it is set at 20 mils.
So, I know we're going to talk about this in the next couple of months, but what do you think we're going to put on the, what language?
The language would say, again, it's going to be an educational of us, informing them that the millage of the two bond issues would be right around nine mils, but the district is only collecting 4.8, and we have a payment schedule that will match that, that will be certified by the bonding company, the bonding attorney, and the county auditor. So that in the future, unless housing prices plummet, we would never go over collecting 4.8 mils. And that is currently what they're paying on their property.
So, right now, that millage goes down slightly?
Yes.
And it would stop going down slightly, it would always stay at 4.8, but it also wouldn't go up to nine?
Correct. Our goal would be, it would still reduce as property values continue, but we're building the structures on today's numbers.
Right.
Knowing that housing prices in the United States have always increased, but we don't want to put in phantom revenue that we could say that next, the next try, or that next annual audit update, we're going to get our normal 20%, but we haven't built that into it. So, our goal would, our goal would be to say, we can work out a payment schedule that if everything flattens out and it stays at today's number for the next 37 years, you would never pay more than 4.8 mils. And depending what happens with NEXUS, the board could choose to slide some of that money over to pay back that debt, or save it for Phase 3, or do a combination of both. So, with NEXUS, once that is finalized, we will have a much better picture, and if something happens before the elections, we can always lower what we're going to charge them, or ask for, because we do have that money. And now, we do have an answer of what NEXUS will bring in, but currently...
Do you believe that that will ever actually be resolved?
Actually, we had a very good sign with Rover, because right now, there's three gas lines in the, in the state of Ohio. And Rover tried to settle for the agreement NEXUS has right now with the state, and the judge threw it out and said, "We will start at the number that Mr. Snodgrass is trying to get to," which is around $1.8 billion for us, instead of $900,000. has right now with the state. And the judge threw it out and said, we will start at the number that Mr. Snodgrass is trying to get to, which is around 1.8 billion for us instead of 950 million. And they pushed them at the starting point, they're starting at the 1.9, or 1.8 for us, instead of starting at the 650 that they started when they made the NEXUS agreement, because that's what they said it should be worth, is 650. So.
That's good.
How the state got from 1.8 and 650 to 950, I don't know, but they didn't do that for Rover. So we're hoping that the Supreme Court is looking at everything and gives him the right to appeal, and that we move closer to where Rover is currently at.
And we still have no sort of timeline on that?
No. The Supreme Court normally takes four to six months, and those depositions were in the beginning of November and of October. So we're looking, it should be, it should be coming up here. We're hoping.
Well, good for Craig Snodgrass for continuing to push us on this.
Yes.
Appreciate it, Craig.
Yep.
Concludes our presentation for the board.
No other questions?
Nope.
I do have one final comment.
Sure.
To Jeff, and then, and to all of you. Thank you for being proactive about that, whatever it was, that piece of equipment that we're, that has a 12 to 18-month timeline. You know, keep your eyes on that. Um, you know, we, we've got the money. We can order that today if we have to. So do your design, whatever it takes. Um, you know, don't come to us and say, oh, we wish we'd ordered it six months ago, because we can do that. It would have to be outside, but we, we have general, general operating money that we could do that. Anyway, so just wanted to bring that, you know, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and just.
We think a lot. We think a lot, because we've had that conversation.
Can we, does everybody know what he's talking about? I guess I missed it.
I don't know what I'm talking about, so no.
You might come into a mic.
He talked about the, the air handlers or something, take a long, long time to come.
Long lead, long lead item for equipment. So when you have a smaller building that you're building, uh, if you don't, if you're not getting your mechanical and your electrical equipment that you need within a four or six-month period, your building is up, your mechanical rooms are available to receive that equipment. So what you want to do is you want to drop it in, then build your walls around it, or, or build your walls around it and drop it in before you put your roof on. Well, if it's a long lead item, then your building is up, your roof is on, you're enclosed, and then it's, it comes, how do you get it in? Well, you have to leave areas out, whether it's your roof or your wall. So there's a cost associated with it. But Ken, you're absolutely right. We've had these conversations that, um, you, you know, we, we build a lot of these buildings before. So, you know, working with the engineers, I'm, I'm confident that, um, you know, typically you release that after you bid that at CD, but I think that, you know, as you get into DD, we, we're going to understand, uh, you know, what, what, you know, uh, air handlers we're, we're going to need. We can design those, and we can get those in the shop drawing and procure them early, and, and get, and get those in. So we would go through the same shop drawing process and everything, but as, as a CMR, then we would do, uh, you know, a GMP for that, and then get those in.
So many acronyms.
Low story short, we'll order them early.
Yeah.
I think that's helped the last project too, at the same time. I think even during COVID, remember we could say it on time, we did a lot of ordering, um, early to keep us on time for the elementary building. So I think that's one of the things we do collaborate on very closely with, um, and saying, order these things earlier, so we know what's going to happen. So we try to stay on top of it.
Exactly. DD is a design development process. It's, it's midway of design. So that, you know, that, you know, instead of doing it at a construction document, you do it midway, and then you, you know, you, you take advantage of those five or six months, um, and you, and you get that into, into production. GMP is guaranteed maximum price.
Thanks.
You almost like education with all the academics.
Yeah, I, I, I know. And yeah, I apologize. We just, this is our world, and we just, you know, spit it out.
I can, I did have one more question. Can we go back to the slide that shows the funding for the select renovations? No, go back. That, that 10 million select renovations. I guess I'm just curious, like, what that includes?
Go, go to the?
Because we know what we're keeping, so would that be totally renovating the auditorium and putting a new floor in the gym and redoing the locker rooms? And so that would include all of that?
I'm looking for the. Yeah, I know. The, you know what I'm looking for. Yeah, I must have got two and one.
So close.
It was F2A.
Okay. There, there we, okay, there we go. I went the wrong way, sorry. So this is the gym, the locker rooms, the, the administrative area now. This is the dining area lobby, and then the, the auditorium. Uh, this was built in 86, I think, and these were 60, I think it was 60, 61. Um, so all of this portion is gone. This is all gone. So the way the building was built, as you come in and you're, you have to shore all of this, okay? And then you're slicing it, you're selectively demoing it and getting rid of it, and then you've got to build walls back up. So that cost is in there. The existing building that is staying here, we've got a mechanical room here, and we've got a mechanical room over here. This mechanical room feeds this side of the building. This mechanical room feeds this side here. Well, you're eliminating all of that. So you're basically, you're, you're severing the arteries to this building. So we have to establish new mechanical spaces. We're proposing here, maybe it'll be here. Um, and then you, we have to run utilities, um, and, and new HVAC and everything throughout that building. So it's, um, it's the cost to, to, um, you know, reintroduce walls to the building, because all of these are gone. So it's new walls, you've got entryways, you've got new roofs, new HVAC system, new electrical system and water, because your water comes in here, so you've got to reestablish that. So.
And updating the theater.
Right.
It's like, it's new pretty on the inside also, though, not just pretty on the outside.
Correct, correct. Yes.
So new stage, chairs.
They re-hab everything.
But keep it, keep in mind, $10 million, most of it you're not going to see. Because that, where, where the big money is in any building is, it's above ceiling, and it's in walls, and it's your HVAC and your electrical system. But yes, yeah. And, and you know, the, the, the building needs, you know, is going to need new roofs too. Um, so, um, you know, it's, it's probably timely for that.
And if we built new, all of these spaces would be significantly smaller and cost more money.
Right, right. Yeah, so thi- this right here, you know, selective demo and renovation for $10 million, this square footage is probably going to cost you about 25. Yeah, so you're, you're getting, yeah, you're getting a bigger bang for your buck, because this square footage is larger than I believe what we're proposing, um, if we were building new. Now, the benefit of building new is, you know, you're designing it, you know, to, to function the way, way you want and everything, so, um.
But in our situation, the drawback is we get it smaller.
Yeah.
Right.
And spend more money.
Yeah, like our auditorium is already, could be a little bit bigger when we want to have a whole school function.
Yeah.
So to have a smaller one. And we definitely don't want a smaller gym ever in any way, shape, or form.
Ever.
Well, this, this is a nice-sized gym. You know, 13,000 square feet. And again, this, the locker rooms here, I mean, they need work, but we've, yeah, we've got money in there for that. So all new HVAC, you know, and, and electric lighting. Um, you know, these, these restrooms get all, you know, obviously, you're, you're severing all the water supply and everything, so that gets, that gets all new.
But it looks like the lockers are on the part that's being demoed.
These here?
Okay, so lockers are written on the part that's demoed.
The blue, the blue is the lo- locker room.
He's referring to the word.
Yeah.
Lockers.
The words outside the locker room.
Says lockers.
Oh, well, yeah, that's, yeah. This, this plan right here was from the original assessment, so we took that overlay, and then that was, yeah. So, but yeah, so that should be there. And then this, this is the second level, this portion right here.
But both of those, even if it doesn't cost that much money, both of those would look clean and renovated and?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, again, we, you know, we, when we went through this, I mean, it was pretty comprehensive. And, and again, it's, it's not, it's not a drive-by. So, you know, we, we think we've got the money in there to make that right. Um, and you know, if you kept that, that portion of the building, you know, you, you would be happy with it. And then, of course, so that building sits out here now. So if you're keeping this and you're dropping this, then, you know, you're going to want that connection piece.
I mean, you know this far better than I do, but if you fix up all the areas in your house that are the worst, then all of a sudden, the areas that looked best.
Suddenly don't look so good.
Don't look so good.
And just a reminder that this, this is after you've gotten all those credits. So I don't know if you're going to be in the board in 20 years. Um, this is really for future boards to, to worry about, but it's just, you know, it's good that you understand the, the concept.
Any other questions?
Or comments? Okay, hearing none. So our future meetings, so April 23rd, 2024 is a regular meeting, 6:00 PM here at the elementary school. That's where we'll be voting on what we're actually going to be doing here. Um, and then May 28th, 2024 is our regular meeting, 6:00 PM, also here at Oberlin Elementary. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.